Okay, let's call the meeting to order, please. Everybody, please rise. Place some flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody's got the meeting minutes from April 1st and 19th at night. Questions, comments?
I'm making a motion to approve and suspend the meeting.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
And second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. Approval of the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda? I am going to move 6A. Ms. Cole Country up, we'll put her at the top of the order. Since she's got a crown on her head, so it's important, and she's got a babysitting job to get to. We'll put her first. Any other changes or additions?
6B is off.
Okay, 6B. We'll take that off the list for this evening. Which one, Monty?
8E.
8E.
The building permit was added earlier.
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Motion by Hack. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Alright, let's start off with Ms. Cole Country. And the crayon initiative. Come on up, what's happened with crayons?
In the evening. Hey there, morning. As your newly crowned Ms. Cole Country, it is my duty to help my platform, which is crayon vision. It is an organization that takes crayons and melts them down into new crayons for kids and hospitals around the world. I would like your permission to place a bucket in the city hall office for the beauty to drop off their crayons.
Okay, so you're asking to have a drop-off site at City Hall for people to bring old crayons, broken, new, whatever. And then you're gonna pick them up and do something with them, you know, melt it down for use for other kids, okay? Alright, I think that's great. So, you have a container you're gonna bring down, or you get like a five gallon bucket or something, or?
Three.
Three gallon. Perfect, that's your mom saying. Okay, I don't think that's an issue, just we'll have a spot inside the city hall, and when you come down, if you're... When you plan on coming down, tomorrow? Sometime this week? Okay?
And give a piece of candy afterwards as well, from one of these guys.
Okay.
Those are the ones that teach you to bring to City Hall, right?
Alright. I don't think that's gonna be a problem at all. So... You need to make a motion out of this, Monty? Yeah, I think a form will actually probably be good for the situation.
I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to approve of the crayon initiative at City Hall drop site.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Good luck with your crayon initiative. Thanks for coming. Alright, then we'll move on to consultation with engineers. More engineering here, from Monday, come on up.
Thank you. I already handed out just a quick little agenda here. I would like to get that to you a little earlier, but we were having a few issues this morning, so sorry about that. Last minute, I'll try and just resend this every time. Some things that get checked off list, and others that we got. But, really, a street project from last year. If you remember, the majority of the work was completed last fall. There were some items that we didn't want done last year, so the chip sealing on the new paved streets will be done this year. Some crack sealing work, and then striping will be done this year. In addition to the work that they haven't done, there's corrective work that has to be done. We've got a punch list, it's kind of broken down into work to do, corrective work, and then extra work. And we're seeing something in getting some extra chip sealing done. So, that's kind of the way the punch list sits, Dave has a copy of it, Monty's got a copy of it. If you've got concerns, please let us know. The contractor, it sounds like he'll probably be in the week of May 6th to get started. That's just a tentative date right now. So, they're probably three weeks out yet. They'd like to have a little kickoff meeting next week, probably next Tuesday. So, we'll just treat it like our normal construction meetings have been in the past, where we'll organize here, probably go through the punch list. It's, I think it's just important that we get ahead of them. So, we're not, you know, chasing the truck down the road, saying, "Oh, we want to add this, we want to add this." So, if there's things that we want to add, please be talking to me, or bring it up with that meeting next Tuesday. So, we can make sure we get enough chips here, enough whatever, so we can get all this stuff done.
Very. Yeah, question, I went through that list a little bit, and you know, that new, that new road title on the old RV park, like east, you know, from that new...
Northeast side?
You know, I guess the new housing area, of that, I guess...
Oh, one way down south west side. Isn't that the one where you messed in the old RV park in case?
Williams Expedition Estates. Yeah.
Okay.
There you go, sorry about that, yeah. Anyway, on that road, some spots like in the middle, it's like split apart a lot. Not sure if that's that's something that, something that we're gonna do now, or is it something we're gonna...
I drove that too, and I noticed there's some settlement in some of those areas, that area is scheduled to be chip sealed this year, as a part of this project. Because I think that was paved a couple of years ago. Where you're gonna see some, if you drive down the road, maybe 50 feet or so, you'll see something through the service lines. You're gonna get big sewer water down the street, and then on service lines. Harder for the contractors to compact those service lines. But, I noticed there's some manholes, some settlement on manholes. We should address those before chip sealing. And then your cracks you mentioned, I did notice that down the middle, a few odd cracks down the middle. I'll have to ask Dave if that's something city staff can do, or if we have... Because Aztec will be coming back, they're the ones that do the chip sealing. Most likely, they'll have a product that we could have them fill in ahead of that. But we do want to get it addressed before the chip seal. I'm not sure of our responsibility if we're, if we're talking to the developers about that or not, but I know we can get it fixed.
Well, there's a couple of spots there that are really bad, where manhole on that first road that runs east and west there. And I think that's the developer and his contractor that have to deal with that, that shouldn't be on our dime.
What I recommend is sending a letter to the developer right away, saying that we're gonna fix that as a city in approximately 30 days, if he doesn't do it himself, and then we could pass the cost along to them. Are you still owing some money from them?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So, there, I guess, you know, like, I guess, a sewer line problems are a tooth or something?
Mostly that sewer line was we've got some gaskets that we're showing, and then we've got some dirty pipe. So, all of that stuff could be done trenchless wise. Doesn't have to be, it could be dug up too. But, again, those are things that the city can't do if we have to, and then assess them to the development. So, really... Do you guys want to keep the work together on a letter tomorrow of those things?
We did do them last fall. Yeah. We didn't accept the street, to work on the street. So, the developer is aware that there are issues. And we've gotten a number of spots. Yeah, we'll keep...
Ultimately, what the city can do is assess the cost to the property.
Okay.
Yeah, that... That's the way you, that's the way to do it, that's the...
You have the numbers, yeah.
What about that bell? By, where the RV park? And we can't get along?
That's in that same development, right?
Yes.
I think that was all part of the letter we sent to... A letter to...
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at Adams, Williams got a letter?
It's actually a link to Williams Builders. We're the one who submitted the list to their contractor for that.
And they don't want to sell lots, right? I mean, so, the longer they wait to not sell lots, the city does have some leverage here, even if we're not holding money from them. I mean, we can not issue building permits, make it a little painful for them, so they do need to address their problems. But they can, they can drag their feet too. But, I like the idea of giving them a deadline, you know, 30 day deadline or something, and then the city just says, "We're gonna fix it, and assess it to you if you don't fix it." Okay, let's do it. Alright, so as far, I was just kind of addressing just the street project here, but those are good things to bring up, because we are chip sealing that area as part of the project. I guess, we'll confirm that time, we've got a kickoff meeting, but I anticipate next Tuesday morning, probably. So, that'll be a few weeks ahead of construction, so we get things on the list. Crack sealing, we gave them a bunch of crack sealing last fall. Looks like we, well, in new paved areas or overlay areas, we are seeing the reflective cracking come through this year. We can do the, we can seal those cracks either before the chip seal or after the chip seal. To talk to Dave's crew about that, it sounds like, you know, we're gonna probably get a quote from Aztec to do that. Chip sealing, they have to come back anyways, they're the guys that do the chip sealing. You guys can either do it yourselves, or we can have the contractor do it. They've been in town to do crack sealing once, and the majority of town, there won't be as much. But, if timing is critical... What was the issue, Dave, because it's hard to get product?
For our local time, we get the product.
Okay.
And then, two week or three week timeframe, we might have a part of time being this long.
Okay. It's just that, there's not that many, or, that's relative, I guess, but there's way less cracks on these areas that were just paved, there's not that many overlay streets that are left to be crack sealed, but... So, it sounds like we'll have them back. I'd like to have them do it before the chip sealed, but it doesn't have to be done that way, it'd be just, it'd be cleaner. No one wastes, no rules on that project. Any questions you're promoting on?
No.
Sanitary sewer issues, so Fifth Street Northwest included a copy of some photos. He was asking me to bring this up, I was not here for the work, but John was here, drew a map. Sounds like the guys discovered some pipes that weren't on the city map somewhere along the boat. It's this map we put together here. Really, what it looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but it, it looks like there was an old asbestos cement water main that was repurposed as a sewer main. And the reason we think that is because it's a six inch line, and from what sewer mains are, I don't know what the issue is. We don't normally use asbestos cement pipe for sewer mains, because they don't mesh well with sewer gases in your sewers. Sewer gases, sewer pipes, you generally have clay pipes and plastic pipes. So, you've got an old six inch AC pipe, there's no, there's no threat or risk to the public at this moment, other than it's just an older pipe, and we know it's undersized, it's not the right material. Also, when water mains are put in, they're not graded like sewer mains are. We put sewer mains in at a certain grade, so that all the services run through them, they run by gravity down and go away, so... We've got an older pipe that's undersized, and is not, it's not what it was intended for. So, right now, it looks like you guys put in cleanouts to serve that area. At a minimum, we recommend a manhole or even two so that we can flush and clean out that line. We ran our camera through it, and these three service lines, right, John? Could be four. So, at a minimum, we recommend putting in manholes so we can access them and maintain the sewer mains. But really, that line needs to be replaced. Options there are cured-in-place pipelining, like you did in the project last year. Still, it's undersized, doesn't have great problems, but it's a cheaper option. Or the more expensive options to dig it up and replace it.
So, you're talking from Third all the way up Fifth?
We might not necessarily have to do the entire streets, we have to get past the last couple of some of the street. So, if there's four houses, it might be two thirds of the block.
Sir, if we need this band aid type situation, we're not guaranteed that this isn't gonna happen again?
No. No. So...
That's not what I wanted to hear.
I know, we can't place, we can't burst that line, we can't pipe burst, so we can do, we could do cured-in-place lining, which is fine, it'll, it'll serve its purpose. So, if we put in manholes and do cured-in-place pipe, it's just something these guys are gonna have to maintain and clean out on a more frequent basis.
So, if we... What's the risk of putting a manhole right at Fifth and Third there? Using the existing pipe that's going up there? That's been there for, I don't know, 50 years, 60 years?
Yeah.
Which I had issues with, except for this buildup and the roots and whatever, at their, at connection at Fifth and and Third. Seems like it's been good, why can't we continue to use it?
You can continue to use it, but there's a risk.
Okay.
So, asbestos pipe, its expectancy is 50 to 60 years, that type of pipe, and it's made for water mains. So, when we're using it for sewer mains, what happens, that pipe will start getting a little more brittle. It looked like it was in fair condition, from our video. So, at a minimum, we should put in the manholes, so we can access and clean it. A better, improved project would be to line that pipe, so that if it is more brittle, it's not gonna collapse. It's, it's just not, it won't be the right size, I'm not worried about capacity, I'm just worried about, you know, we get your jetter into a six inch pipe and being able to clean it out, so... There's kind of good, better at best. At a minimum, we need to put manholes in them.
Well, we gotta find out where that line ends, so when you're, for a cleanup, so we can flush that.
You can do a cleanup, but we could do a second manhole too.
You know, that's fiber optic, inches away.
That's very long stuff. Yeah. It sounds like the trench list, I'm cured-in-place lining is probably the best idea. And then just know it's not, it's just not the right size, and should be on the schedule for at least once a year, maybe twice a year, clean it up.
Right, so we have an apartment building with four clicks, and then one, two... There's two other houses on that line.
Yeah. So...
So, it's not a heavy-use line, right?
No, no. Capacity-wise, a six inch line can handle that, that's fine.
Okay.
It's just, that's undersized according to minimum standards.
So, we're taking a little bit of the risk of the age and and the type of pipe. So, you're saying manholes, I thought we're looking at one right on Fifth and Third?
We need one at Fifth and Third, but we have to have something at the upstream end. We can do a cleanout, but oftentimes, you put a manhole on the upstream side too.
Because Doug Rothley's always had problems in his apartment building. He's got his whole little snake he goes down there, so I don't know if there's, that's where his in there. But we don't know, because you can't get up there and see where that is.
If we do the manholes, it's not a waste of money, because we would need them anyways. We end up replacing the line in a couple of years, we got the manholes done.
So, cost-wise, for replacing and lining it, putting in manholes, are you talking lots of money, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, just to put in a couple of manholes, if they're in the street, it's probably, you know, 10 to 15,000 bucks a piece by the time you patch the street. Digging up and replacing the sewer main, if it's in the street, is probably, you know, closer to a hundred thousand dollars.
And lining it?
Lining it, you know, it's always better when you do bigger projects, but, I mean, probably less than 20.
I think your thing, this, that AC isn't in the street, it's in the mall, and it's grass, or the street, you know, you wouldn't have to tear it up, Fifth Street, all the way out.
Is it ugly, curved?
It's, what, seven inches from back to the river.
So...
But I mean, at least it's curved, but yeah, there's fiber and pollen, and I mean, that's a compound, the West River goes all the way past Fifth through that open field, and that's what ties in West Houston. So, it's, it's a bendy one.
Do the manholes first. Then, I think we just get a quote to do the cured-in-place lining, and then if you're, if you're patient with it, and you give a relaxed schedule to get it done, I think we can just get somebody that's doing the work in the area, and then get someone to do it. That'd be my recommendation. Just knowing that it's gonna be undersized. Yes, sir.
But, you know, we're gonna have pays come in, and do some videoing cleaning. Once you get that manhole in, on Third, get a mechanized camera up there, and find out where it is, see what you have to deal with.
Right on.
Or someone that'll, when you're giving us, they're coming right away.
And you don't necessarily need to find the end of it, as long as we get further upstream than that last connection, we're, then we're good.
You're all covered, yeah.
But we don't know where it is. That's the problem.
Sure.
If we put a manhole upstream too, would that be a better opportunity to find where that is in the news, or not?
Yeah, 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 I mean, really, we've got to find, send the camera through. We need a couple of access points to find all that stuff, right? So, put the manholes in, or a manhole and a cleanout, and then we find that location, so that they're gonna, I guess, you've been around the trenchless pipe repair, maybe? So, you know, you enter through one access point, you put the new pipe in, cure it in place on the inside of the old pipe, and then they run their robot through to cut out the service lines. So, we'll have at least three service lines, probably four, and then some cleanouts that we'll have to cut out too, that were recently installed. I guess, well, if you're interested in that, let's have to decide if you want us to engage a local contractor for pricing or not.
I mean, I would say, I guess, if we do the one manhole, you know, lining-wise, I mean, I kind of just look at that pipe too, and I mean, it's pretty hardy at the moment, sturdy, you know? And the pipe that I've seen, you know, gets, I guess, like, soft and falls apart, you know, and stuff.
It took Tim quite a while to cut through it, it's solid.
Yeah.
That did, but...
So... But when, when you put that manhole in there, you reconnect that pipe so it's not that funky elbow that's in there? Because that was, that's where the buildup was at, sure.
Yeah, so you put on a, cut the pipe, and so it's gonna get an intersection of pipes, you're gonna cut the pipe, put in the manhole, and the manholes are poured with the bench in them, so that it'll direct the flow around it. And these guys can pull the lid and do maintenance, flush it, clean it, as needed. Yeah.
Well, I know we don't have to make that decision right now, that's something we need to think about in the next week or two, we gotta figure out, have a plan of attack. Can you give us some hard numbers on the manhole?
If you'd like, I could get a quote.
Okay.
And just, I'll work with Monty on that, get a quote for it, and we can make it. I'm just estimating.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay. It's a good start.
Any other questions for Jared or John?
I've just got some things, some notes here on some building properties, you want me to wait until they come up on the data?
Let's see what we have with the agenda. You know, you're up here right now, let's just, let's move in towards those right now. You trying to start? Let's do the one on the north side, 200 first. Where's that? You want, you want it?
No, I didn't. For gallons, you mean?
Yeah.
I didn't go in.
Okay, we can leave that one going for now, it's not, it's not important. It is important, it's just not, it doesn't have to be done right now. Okay, let's do the one on the south side, 200 right there. And Josh Meisner, is that back here, Josh is the owner of that piece of property? Yeah, come on up, Josh. So, Jared, so we talked about a few things. Go ahead and have a seat. So, this chunk of land here that Josh purchased is not in city limits, but it is in city jurisdiction. It is zoned agriculture right now. And next Monday, we're having a meeting at 4:30 with the zoning committee to change, to see if that can be changed from ag to tennis.
Commercial.
Commercial slash residential?
C1 will allow residential.
C1 will allow both, okay? So, the reason why I wanted you here tonight, and Jared, and John, and Dick, and Ryan is sewer and water in this location. And another part of the discussion needs to be annexation also. So, I want them to talk, Josh, to you about, and us, what, where the responsibility lies, and what costs may be, and what infrastructure we'll have to go into this, because there's no sewer and water over there right now. And I think you've had, I think you've had some people give you some input, but not the engineers. So, can you show us where you're kind of looking at, first of all, putting your the shop or the, or the house, or?
Whole bar would go, basically, right over here. Of course, there's a fence up there, on the, I know Goan put it up. I'm assuming, I don't know how close it is to property line, he said it was, I mean, basically right on. But I'd be about 30 feet in from the fence line, right here, which would put me about, I think it was roughly 250 feet off the highway. And it would just kind of run this way, basically blocking the view of the propane plant there. Maybe 36 by 72. And I have, of course, electricity that I wouldn't put in, kind of sewer line or anything. But the house, wherever the gate is, the gate must be right there. Basically, kind of straight back, somewhere in this area, it would just basically come straight in. Now, I don't have an exact location where I, I want to be, but, so it's just roughly somewhere in here.
Are you gonna dig a basement?
I'm kind of leaning towards just having modular, but I know Goan had, seemed like, at least, but he told me. I didn't go back and check on anything that he told me, but it seemed like he covered all of his angles, he said that he had talked with, you know, a handful of people, and he had... He said that he, um, had talked with, you know, a handful of people and he had some testing down there as far as. You know, if it would support a foundation, this and that, um, different lights, he said it was, um, you know, passed or whatever that it would allow. Now, I didn't ask him, he asked, you know, as far as, yes, a basement, a pro and that deep or just possible style. Um, that I'm not sure, I, I checked it a whole bunch, but, uh, um, and then he did. Again, I didn't background check, but he told me that he did check on, um, uh, grain field. And putting a septic system, he apparently has to pass some for that.
Percolation test, right?
He, he did say he checked into that and said it, it would allow for grain field, um, to go that route too.
How do you test for percolation? How's that?
So, a company is gonna take a soil sample.
He did say there was some soil.
Testing?
Yes, so who did it, I?
We needed to see that, but.
Okay, I know he said he spoke to Mr. Johnson. Okay, so, um, but yeah, like I said, I didn't actually, you know, call him, check on him, I just took it from his word, so.
Yeah, how many acres is it?
Uh, including, I know he said, cause I would actually, the way you had it set up, I'm sure you guys have looked at it. Like, I don't know if it's over here or here, I actually own to the other side of the creek, you explain, I own the water, I own the land. Um, and over here, it's like two mil of it, but it has a total of seven acres, and land I think was five and two quarter.
Yeah. You wanna?
Sure. Hey, we wanna work with you as best we can here, obviously, but, yet. Private sewer versus, you know, public sewer, there's pros and cons of each, obviously. If you put in your own private sewer system, there's, could be a wet location, you could have problems with a septic drain field. Being this close, um, I believe you'd have to get an ordinance from, or a variance from the city to put in a private, you know, drink sewer system like this. Um, just because of your proximity to everything, but we could, city desires, you know, grant them a variance with the. You know, caveat that when the city sewer does become available, that, you know, has to hook up at that point. Otherwise, running sewer to the spot, it's a beautiful location, but it's just tough, because we don't have sewer that close. We have to cross the creek to get there, so really, if it's just one home. You've got some options that aren't terribly expensive, if there's multiple homes going in there. Then we're getting to the point where we need a, you know, a list station, but to serve one.
I'm sorry, so you're saying if you put some, just one, one home, sewer could be dug in there and tied into city sewer, Falco list station, you think?
So, there's some engineered products out here where you could buy, um, they're kinda like, a lot of lake caverns have them, they're called injector pump systems. So, it would be, you'd have your own little pump station in your basement and then you'd run a line via a pressure force main. To connect into the sewer, city sewer line. It's more expensive to do that, but it probably carries a lot less risk for you.
Okay, but the closest sewer line?
It's across the creek. Yeah, it's like we got it to the southwest and then to the east. So, you're talking probably pretty expensive to run sewer, something like that, I mean. It'd be his private line until it entered the city right away, I'm sure we'd have to work to get a permit to cross the creek. But, I mean, I'd be happy to visit with them about the costs of doing either one, it's just. The, the public system that the city would own and operate versus his own private system. Like I said, definitely more expensive to go the public route, but less risk for him, so.
So, there's no issue with getting water there, it's just the sewer, I mean, is the main concern or?
We can get water there, again, we gotta, you know, run a service line to it, and usually when we develop a property like this. Any cost to bring water and sewer to a property are your expense, so, the city could build that infrastructure and then special assess it to them, no?
The complicating factor is southwest water. We do not have an agreement with southwest water in terms of expanding our territory. Because the costs associated with their agreement were double to triple the costs of a typical customer of theirs. But the city has to pay upfront. And if we expand our territory beyond our present boundaries, we will have to enter an agreement with southwest water. And that's a question of, what are the terms of the agreement? So far, we don't like their terms, and it would either go to mediation through government's office. Or it would become very complicated, as soon as we step outside of our present city boundary. We are with issues with southwest water. Southwest water can provide us water. But if the city does it, it's a whole different boundary.
Okay. I've worked through some of these issues with some cities in the past, most of the time they've worked better together, it sounds like, but. If he has to make a few phone calls to see if southwest is gonna serve him, I don't know, I don't know where southwest line is compared to this.
This way, it's north.
They might be cooperative, I don't know, you probably know better than me.
So right now, Pat, that little chunk is not in the southwest water boundary lines of our community, is that what you're saying?
It's within, that little chunk, because it's not in city limits, our boundary is city limits. For southwest water, so anybody who receives southwest water outside of city limits. Presently, they're okay, but as soon as we annex or change our boundary. We have to be entering into an agreement with southwest water.
So, in, in some of other projects, Valley City and like later Oaks, Lisbon, where this has happened. And even in southern, just south of Fargo, uh, as the city rules, they will extend the infrastructure. It's kinda weird, they'll sell the water to the rural water district, and then the rural water district will sell it to you. So it might just take, straighten out this stuff. I'm just trying to figure out how to get them.
That would be wonderful, we haven't had that impression so far, never tried.
So that's one thing we need to figure out, I guess.
So do I need to? Is that gonna be my job to try to figure out what's going on with the water, or are you guys gonna talk to, talk, what's the next step here?
What is the next step, Pat?
Well, unless you guys wanna enter an agreement with southwest water, it's up to Josh to decide where he wants to get water. You won't, you're not, they, you don't have to provide any water, and you don't have to enter an agreement with southwest water. As long as you don't change your boundaries, as soon as you change your city boundaries, that's when. The provision kicks in, and you have to have an agreement with southwest water.
Isn't that land right on the edge of Goffel? Is that land on the edge of?
Well, and that was an option too, you know, when I talked to Go and he said it was, he had that tested too, um, I don't know what, who he talked to. And yes, that was an option, and, uh, you know, that is the only option. And that's a lot of, um, but I grew up on an old apartment house, we had a little well water and I would just, of course, it'd be nice to help.
Absolutely.
You know, be hooked up to some decent water, water pressure, so I'm trying to go that route.
And I think we want you to, Josh. But southwest isn't, we, we can't just do without.
See, and that, that date come up last year, when I, cause, um, when I gave them an estimate on this property, I had thirty days to. Figure lighting stuff out, you know, I could still back out whenever, um, and I had, uh, talked to people. And the southwest option came up, and then city water came up. And they, they tell me that southwest was a long ways away, you know, I passed on the way to get there, and then I was told that city water option was across the creek. Then I'll move, it just wasn't known that you guys had to get southwest.
Not everybody knows that, that's not.
Okay, so I, so I was told southwest or city water, that's what I was, was told, so. My thinking was that I just had to talk to you guys and get the okay or not, that's what I was.
So the southwest water line, Dick, if I'm right, runs along the north side, but by Ishlands, that's where the water hits. So that's where the closest southwest water line is, yeah.
Which is why.
Yeah, which is way.
This wall is.
Up, yeah, yeah, way up there, yeah, way up here.
Across all the water lines.
Yeah, so I don't see southwest water providing the, the other, they can't fit.
Yeah.
More underneath the creek.
And that was, was, you know, basically that, I was, was aware of that, born underneath the creek, and I, I do know it's not gonna, you know, be cheap. But that was, you know, for sure, I wanted to go, at least get the okay to do it and, you know, see what the, the cost is gonna be to come there.
I'd have no issue with you connecting to us and bringing underneath the, the creek or coming from east, west, or the south. But it's the, the whole thing with southwest letting us do that without them wanting us to sign a new agreement. And paying more to southwest water.
Which ult, ultimately gets charged to you.
Yeah, understandable, yeah, yeah, oh, okay.
So what, what we can do, Josh, is we can contact them to see what the, what the situation is, if they're, if, what, what that agreement might, might look like. What costs would look like, I.
We've seen that agreement, uh, many times, and they refused to change any part of it for us, and we've pointed out. The inequities in that agreement, you know, I live out in the country, I get southwest water, I have a five-year construction. Uh, contract, and they want ten years from the city, okay, what's, what's that all about? And then, and then it comes back to you, like I said, so all of a sudden you have a ten, twelve thousand dollar bill right up front. And, well, you can easily drill a well, or you could have other sources of water, okay, but that's.
So do we have to have a letter from Matty in the city, or do you send a letter to southwest saying this is the situation? We'd like to hook him up, how do, how does this happen?
Well, I think Matty and I could live together, we're both familiar with what's going on there, and we've dealt with this over the last several years, so.
I'm expecting we're not gonna like what we're gonna hear from them, but, that's, we gotta, gotta ask.
Maybe they're preoccupied with the legislature right now. Get in.
And then, uh, it's, sorry, as for the, um, septic system or sewer, now I, can I check what's going on there? Who we talked to, maybe he's got some draining that he had to test it, or?
If you have testing papers.
Okay.
We'll give that to Jared, you know, if you provide a test, we'll get, he's got, he'll make a look at that, what's the?
Here maybe add that customer help, they have lit the ball of dirt in about three or four counties around here. And they'll tell you just by calling up where you put a drain field, and how big it's gotta be.
Okay, all right, thanks, Chris. So, and, but, so, back to what I mentioned earlier, annexation. If we annex them into the city, then we, southwest water is the issue.
We're invading their territory.
Or invading the, okay, and then do we allow drain fields and septic tanks into city, into city limits? They don't, but we do.
Oh, you do, yes.
Right.
Well, and you know, the county has that two acre requirement, the city doesn't have one.
Curse is so many feet from the city service, it's allowable unless you're within so many feet of the city.
And water was like, what, six hundred?
I was thinking it was four or five hundred feet or something like that, if I remember.
I think you could find a way to accommodate sewer.
Yeah.
So, i- if I would, I guess I still gotta hook up to, to water then, so if I would hook up to water. Um, I, does it automatically have to be annexed into the, to city?
No.
So I could keep, I could keep it, was, can't be zoned ag, like, can I put a house on ag?
Well, don't think it's commercial, I think it's a.
But it has to be commercial?
Yeah.
Yes, for the building, yeah.
So then. That better than help with the southwest though?
No. Unfortunately.
Okay. Good, so then I do.
It's not simple.
I do nothing for now?
You mean two weeks?
Just wait for, okay?
You have to wait.
Two weeks.
Next, next Monday, we're, next Monday, we're meeting up with zoning to, to ask the zoning board to change. That from ag to commercial, so you put the house and the shop on there for his business. And then.
Okay.
Now, is there anything else I need to do with the full barn going in? I mean, I got, I had, I got, uh, filling it up for the building, I mean, I see that works going, everything, um.
I don't.
Utilities, this is gonna have water and stuff, no, just eleven, no, not to start it, yes.
Then you should be fine with that.
Yeah.
Once it's resolved.
Okay, and that's, um, the meeting I'm trying to.
At four thirty, right here, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we wanna help you. You might have to keep that backup plan.
It's always been a piece of property that's been kind of in no man's land, so to speak, but, yeah.
So if, if I go with, with well, if I drill a well and everything, um, then it can stay. Annexed the way it is, is, is commercial, or is, will that still be moved to city a lot, or what's?
No, we'd still, we'd still have to change it to from ag to commercial.
Yeah, okay.
But we.
Cannot be done, that's.
But not annexation, no annexation.
Yeah, it can be made commercial, but not annexed.
Right.
Okay, isn't that, that would be a little, um.
You might need a variance for that too.
I think we could work with that though.
Okay, okay.
All right, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Casey, go ahead.
Along, I guess, annexation, then not gonna do it, I mean, I mean, I would love to not be. Part of the city too, we pay like less, less, I guess, like taxes, you know, and I mean, we got multiple like properties in town that are just. Just, I guess, like surrounded by the city, you know, and I mean, like every time this comes up. Nobody wants to, wants to say, say, be a bad guy, you know, open credit.
Well, obviously, that's a decision of the, the tire board, if it's, you know.
We can still annex it if he goes his own well.
We can still, and we can, can still annex it if it's, if he has a well, he's still receiving services from the city such as garbage. Police protection, fire protection, you know, all the services of the community, still, still receiving.
Yeah, whatever.
Sure, okay.
I just wanna make sure I get them.
Use some water, so.
Yeah.
Yes, so I don't think that's a big problem, Casey, but, so. All right, you have any other questions for us, Josh, right now, or?
Um, actually, one more one here, um, I did bring up, uh, you said possibly some issue, tree, a tree row. Um, if everything works out here, I'd like to, um, kinda line the, that north boundary line, the trees. Um, and she had China mention, as long as it wasn't creating a snowdrift or anything along that, that road, or. Um, is there anything in, you know, city orders with any codes I have to follow with putting up a, a road trees?
If your fence line is, you're gonna be over fifty to a hundred feet back from your road.
Yeah.
Over a hundred.
Yeah, the county has, that, that, they have a setback for tree rows, for roads.
But that's the state road, though, so we gotta ask the state then, right?
But it's still county land.
Okay, then tell it's annexed. But we have trees in almost all of our ditches right now.
Okay, their setback's a pretty extreme.
Really?
So it probably, so, something you wanna check in new?
You would wanna check for the.
Cause there's already a tree row in the ditch right there.
Yes, and of course, we'd be back far.
But you're further back there. Can you zoom into that at all, Matty, a little bit to? See, there's already.
Will those trees put in as part of the dike to help with the erosion stuff, maybe?
We can cross that ditch.
Because the county highway right away takes a dip down. So, and then gets wider there, right in that area also.
Alright. Good luck. Try to help it along, as much as we can. I think we're. Think we're good, right? Okay, let's go to six C, Main Street Initiative Chamber. Alright, so we got a letter from the Chamber. And they just wanna do proclamation to be part of the governor's Main Street Initiative. I'm sure everybody, everybody got a chance to look that or not, it's basically just saying that we. Would be part of this, and it's, doesn't cost any money, it's just, it's kinda like being.
Buster thought it may actually open some doors for some.
So if anything, it may help financially get a vote, and it's, it's just better for our community, but. We can be part of this, and if we get, get a couple more opportunities, that'd be great, so. We do need, they would like us to take action, and if we wanted to do this, we need a motion to approve it. A motion by Act. The second by Wolf, discussion. Rule call. Alright, motion carried, thank you, six D, local permit for Saint Martin's Catholic Church.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second by Stern, discussion. Rule call. Motion carried, thank you. Alright, eight A, planning and zoning plat, Christmas third, Shannon.
Matt, what is this one to? Take two separate cats. And merge a lot from each one into a new division called Christmas third. It is out by the old Vice Ottawa's building. He wants to add, he had taken a building from it a while back, and he wants to put a shop onto the side, so we have to do this to make it a shop.
Uh, Casey's got it right now, no, no question.
That one kinda shows how he plans to.
And the red line is the new property line.
The planning and zoning board met recently and approved the changes. Um, so basically, he's taking this strip from the M and S, and then, you know, adding it to this lot. And the whole thing is getting rezoned into a new division.
So he's gonna add to the?
Yeah, he's adding an entire shop.
To, towards the east. The pink is existing, the green is.
There was a, there was an easement there that will be vacated, it was checked, there aren't any utilities in there. And that is gonna be part of his.
That's in between the clerks and, oh, dairy.
It's kinda back behind Myron, actually, isn't it?
Myron and Klein's kind of. Just kinda west of that.
Somewhere about, the easement is is the actual end of the Christmas edition, and we need to shut it on into that other division. To create these two new lots.
So we need to approve what, what the zoning board approved, if you want, before changing that, that'd be good. Approve the plat.
So then, I guess, uh. So then, I'm gonna say, I guess, easement, like, was ever guess, like, talked about, I guess, like, leaving it there? And just giving him, just giving him, I guess, a variance, you know, down the road, if you wanna bore, bore him like something.
I think we talked to that planning and zoning meeting, and if they ever do need it, that we just have to go around the edge and just put it into the.
Cause he's building over there. Building over the old easement, yeah.
Just decided since there wasn't any.
Yeah, and there's nothing in there right now. So he would have, along this red line, would be the, he'd have to have to do easement, have to be on there.
But then I guess he would have to, I guess, be on board, though, right?
Right. Okay, if the board wants to approve that, we need a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to approve the zoning for the plat of Christmas third edition. Second by Stern. Discussion. Rule call. Alright, motion carried. Thank you. Property improvement, uh, minor, so we've covered that.
Did you wanna talk about the special meeting yet, actually?
Can I go ahead, Johnny?
Since we have the planning zoning meeting on Monday for Josh, we also need the commission to meet and approve that also. So we're wondering if you guys would be able to throw a special meeting together for me on Monday to approve Josh's rezoning also.
Would you be able to be here?
Six o'clock, I think.
Six, yeah. You're not gonna be here, will you? Okay, so, three of us, for sure. Six o'clock, yeah, okay, and then they, yeah, they bumped the zoning meeting back a little bit, too. That'd be great. Okay, property improvements, Wade Solan, Shannon.
I did basically read about this commercial stuff, and we got a little chat. And I asked him just to come on out and kind of explain his plans with you guys, and see what you think.
Well, I'm glad to see you all here tonight, but I've been at this town for five years, you know, I believe it. And who would have ever thought that it was gonna succeed?
It's, it's really succeeded, Wade.
Well, I know, but, uh, I try never to have anything out parked on the street, and. I keep my street clean, you know, I buy a broom, just so I don't ever get the street dirty. I don't mind moving out somewhere, I was gonna ask you if there's any grants or anything you guys got for the property around town. But regardless, I need some time, because right now is when everybody wants me the worst. But I'm definitely not against getting a shop somewhere. But right now, I just don't have the time to do that, or the money, you know, I keep my money spent up, but I'll make from do this shit, you know?
Well, first of all, I, I think your business has been great. Having a, your problem is you're landlord, you're in a residential area with a commercial business.
Well, I didn't have any idea, I thought you were gonna change, I didn't know you need nothing for that.
You're right, you're right. And you do keep the street clean, even in the winter with your. Your cat, you keep things clean, which we appreciate, I appreciate, too, that's my street, too, but.
When you get a little older, I'll even do your driveway, like.
So, um. Well, I, I think we totally understand the timeline situation, I don't think that's a huge deal, but I. You know, you do have some neighbors that aren't real enthused about what's happening, and it seems like you're continuing to grow as we. So, um, before you continue to grow too much, you didn't have to move too much out, you know, that's the, that's the other issue.
Well, as far as moving, I could have everything gone on there in a week, no problem, that would be nothing left but dirt. But, uh, you know, I don't wanna have to move it, and I do work for the city, I do work for all the people in the city, I don't wanna.
Nope, I totally understand that, like, we, we get that, I think we can, I think we can work with the timeline.
And then, uh, you know, both that, maybe a grant, cause I do employ people, I mean, last year I spent forty thousand dollars on payroll. And a lot more I just spent around here.
I don't know what, what grants, we have talked to Buster Lindowski, he's in community development, if he's had some ideas for you, but. I guess, you know, what Shannon brought over to you, she said you were very receptive, and she wouldn't talk to you, so that, that's, that's great. So, I think we just work together and see how, if we can help you at all, or.
I'm looking up a building right now, and, um, in my spare time, but, uh. So I, I don't have very, quite as much room as I would have, you know? Yeah, I'm getting there walking pretty good already, you know, and I'm already starting to park stuff in there.
Uh, any comments, questions, concerns, Shannon, what's the next move with, with you, with, with your paperwork?
That's all I know, then, just commercial and residential, I don't have any.
Or you could just change the commercial. I could have bought that out of the lot there, and I could have made a circle drive, I hate backing in there all the time.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if that's gonna happen, or maybe I'll sell it to you.
There you go, oh, I want those driveways, well, maybe it parks them on it.
There's the issue.
No, I wouldn't mind having a full bar in one bit, but I don't wanna have it, you know, I gotta land out Crossroad, not just too far. You know, but you don't get the stuff done that you should, when you're not supposed to by the work.
Well, I guess. I'm not sure, Wade, where we go from here, other than you probably shouldn't continue to, continue to build. If you need to finish what you've got now, understandable, and then we need to.
Well, I could build, do build a garage, you know, and then, uh, I'll keep my stuff cleaned up. You know, I got a bunch of crane mats I take, but my yard, I kinda plugged up this spring when it was melting there. It looks pretty good now, I mean, I can drive back there and turn it around, you know? So, and I, I'll keep it looking good, you know, I'm a landscaper, so I gotta have my shit looking pretty good. I mean, you don't trust a skinny cook.
That's, that's true, good point. Alright, well, thanks for coming, and thanks, I appreciate you, um, working with Shannon, and we'll see what else we can do with. Unless, any other comments?
And, you know, right now, I already got my stuff all over, I cleaned my yard right out, it goes all through my job. I'll probably be down there building Josh's full bar.
Sounds good.
He asked me already.
Anything else, any other?
Oh, and I put manholes and do sewer and stuff, too.
You have your contractor's license?
I got my con, you know, I, I worked on a lagoon in Golden Valley last year. And I was just red in that job. I called the health department and squealed on myself. Two days later, they call me back, well, Mr. Solan, you've got all your credentials, good luck.
Alright.
Come to find out, that was that job I had all summer.
Do we want to put some kind of a time limit, or a percentage?
How about next year?
Next year?
Next year, next year, I'll have something to, I'll be building, I gotta get my garage changed to work this summer. And next summer, I can buy something else and build that garage, you know? And I'll keep it cleaned up, if it's not cleaned up, well, then, I'm gonna get the hell out of here.
Thoughts from the board?
So is there a building there, like, permit, like, right now?
No, I don't have it all.
He, he does have his building.
I didn't know it expired, I had one, but. Well, I'm busy, I'll tell you why.
Wade, I don't think next year's gonna work, it's gonna be, have to sooner than that, I'm not.
Well, I've been checking around already, and it's like this, hey, if you find out, there's a grant. You know, I figured, well, if you're mad at me, well, I'll just drag my motorhome to the crossroads, I'll call it Matt's, but then I want you to build a full bar around me. There you'll be, I'll be at home.
We're not mad at you, you just have, we just need to change the.
I didn't, you know, I wouldn't dreamt in a million years.
I know.
Did it did what it did.
Yeah, it's blown up.
But I, and the reason I think, because I say what I mean, and I do what I say, you know, that's it.
Yeah, absolutely, good. Anything else? No, okay, thank you for coming, okay, Casey, you have?
I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, I know that, like, this time of year is gonna be, like, busy for you.
Absolutely.
You know, so I mean, even if it be like, you know, I mean, like, next, you know, like, spring, or.
Well, yeah, you know, I just gotta get, you never know, I always, uh, I don't procrastinate. So I get stuff done as fast as I can, and if I get this stuff done, and I find a place. You know, I talked to Matt players, and I talked, maybe, uh, Josh, I think, might have a lot over that side of heath there. Yeah, so, yeah, so there's some options that I'm looking at, you know? But this time of year, I'm kinda broke.
We understand, um, so you're thinking maybe January one-ish?
Take a look at it and see what is progress since.
Let's shoot towards.
Damn, I gotta think about thousands of things tonight, this is one last.
Alright, sounds good, thanks for coming. Alright, hearing a, uh, connotation, uh, proceedings on ten twenty-five First Avenue Northeast. You're up again.
Yeah, that, uh, Lauren, we did issue them a notice and order back in March. Um, haven't heard from them, finally, I believe today he called me. I called him back and got no answer, and no, no voicemail, so what he had to say. That's irrelevant at this point, but, yeah, they didn't come, they would've, you know, this was their opportunity to come and. You know, explain what they were planning on doing, if they had any plans, but if they had the interest in the building. The way Monty and I kinda read the ordinance. We're supposed to give them thirty days, but since we already gave them a hundred and thirty days, or three hundred and thirty days already. Um, it's now, we do have the opportunity to have it re-paved, vacated, or demolished. As by your order, and it will be, let me as a special assessment against that. So I guess we just need you to say, yeah, let's do it.
There was also the order from customer help regarding the. The cats, and the condition of the, of that thing, and, uh. The representative from customer help was in my office the other day, wondering why it wasn't gone already, because we had the order from her. We needed nothing else, according to her.
Yeah, but, not according to. That, that had, the way I read it, there was nothing to stand on, her thing was the cats. And she's like, well, if you don't clean up the cats, you can throw the house away, and.
Well, I think, kind of is coming down on both, both issues, so. Do we need to have a special hearing now to say that we're taking it now?
I think that's what this is about, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, this was their chance to come in and.
Pat, do we have to do another?
Well, did they receive notice of this?
Oh, yes.
Yes, it cost liberty, yes.
And so is, so have we adjourned from, or not adjourned from, but have we? Just been at the regular meeting and we're in our hearing?
No, not yet.
Because there is no notice of the hearing in this notice and order. That was just for them to remove the property by the eighth.
So we still have to have.
So realistically, we have to give them notice of hearing.
Okay. So then there is no formal action to take?
No formal action to, unfortunately.
They just have the opportunity to come in to hang around.
Well, that's.
Cause it seems like they've basically abandoned that property anyway.
Do we need to hand deliver a letter saying that we're having a hearing on the, at the next meeting?
Post one on their building.
Can that be part of our?
The ordinance allows that, doesn't it, Shannon? Where you could put one on their building.
Can that be part of our special meeting on the twenty-sixth? Can we do it then?
I don't know.
It's gonna be a week from today.
No, it's, I mean, it's not gonna make a difference, I know, but you gotta do the due process there.
Right, okay. So. At our next regular meeting. Okay. Okay. And then Dave, that means you and your crew will be removing that thing and taking, taking it out to landfill and then be charged back. We charge back to.
We don't do dead cats. Actually, Shannon, then Custer District Health have. They said you could take it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's auto program.
What I wanted them to sign that paper before, they never would sign that.
But they wouldn't do the program. It would cost them nothing.
He don't, he didn't want to pay for it, but he didn't wanna sign the paper that said he could get it for free. That's why it could be planned.
Okay, we will, if you will have that paper, the letter served, so then saying that that'll be the.
And what was the date, Monty?
The sixth.
Six, so we have the month?
Yeah. And then you have five thirty. Ground to the regular meeting.
Okay.
And that's for you.
Yes.
David, beam up the, uh, start again. All right. So let's move on to eight E, building permit with variance request, uh, logging time.
Yes, they want to put a shed up, be in the backyard of the fence. That area town requires a twenty-five foot setback in the backyard. Which if they put that shed up, it would be right up, be right near your house. The other people in the neighborhood have sheds, close to the fences. This one's gonna be.
This is their hu, there's no.
There is no house.
Their house isn't on this picture.
No.
Yeah.
But did you see the neighbors, actually, we want everybody, we kinda talked about the neighbors, they.
That's a more innocent one, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then just there are one over there and just for some reason that area has a twenty-five foot rear yard setback. You know, if you're putting a garage up and you have neighbors in your backyard, you wanna make sure that garage is far enough away so that it doesn't. Like overpower your backyard. But this house, there is no backyard. It's the walking path. They have a six foot fence. They put a shed in there, who's it hurting? They, you know, they're, it's not gonna be too large for their lot or anything. The only thing they're concerned about is that they would like to get it closer to the fence. In the rear, they'd like to take it from twenty-five down to twenty, or five, I'm sorry, that'd be twenty foot variance. And then the side, they'd like to take it in from ten to five, so that'd be about five feet. To get it, not take up so much yard space.
Should go closer to the road. Less, less driveway.
The issue with that lot is, is a forty foot back set up the streets.
On the front, yeah, yeah.
Their early shovel.
Yeah, they are. I agree. Chance, what the board like to do?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the bike path here, walking path. How come, how come in the fences and all these places don't really like line up, you know?
Um, like these guys may put theirs up, but theirs is right on the property line, but these guys kinda left a little room around theirs because they wanted to put some plants and stuff. So theirs isn't right on the property line. But I know Zonzo's, cause I've watched him build. You know, and if you look at that one, you know, that's a pretty nice sized shed that's really close to their fence. And I was with Steve at one in that area where they built a garage in their backyard. And that one, you know, had to be the twenty-five feet way because the neighbor's backyard was right there. You know, you don't worry about.
So they're just looking at putting like an oversized utility type shed in.
It's gonna be nice with, it's gonna look like a house, like it'll be larger than.
It'll keep them nice.
Yeah.
Okay, the board wanna grant variance or Casey?
So this variance is then off the back, it's not off the side?
It is off the side too.
A little bit too, yeah, five feet off the side as well. So it's gonna be five feet off of both the back when it's all complete.
Back and the side, yeah, yeah, five feet, five feet, so.
I would motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, I'm sorry, by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Cat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
I'm security. Reports, water sewer.
I don't have anything at this time.
Streets cemetery. I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions for Casey on water and sewer? Dick, anything? Ryan? Sorry, Jason? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Up there where I got is, we got about, then we get through our, our tar oil?
Yeah, we got one, one refill from, uh, from the county. Hopefully we can get some more.
What we got?
We had everything north of two hundred that was chip sealed. That's all cracked sealed and all. So I think north of two hundred is done. So we'll have to start, hopefully in the morning, we wanna start to do lag around Hayes and Rogers and buying, uh, West Dakota Lumber. Hayes and Rogers moving all the vehicles and stuff off the streets. We wanna start there. And we'll start in the early part of, with, with what we'll even get.
I'm lost, Dave, has anything else? That's all that I have.
Okay. I've just got a couple of phone calls here the last four or five days. One about the paper we're putting down on the tar. Uh, it doesn't always stick, so it's blowing and.
That's the two five.
Looking, that's two five. It's looking, it's look crappy toilet paper. Blowing around, not sticking and creating this lit, looks like litter, littering around the community. So we need, we need to get people. Yeah. And while we're doing that, we've got some ditches that, like over there across from the city shop and a few other spots that need to be picked up.
Yeah, I've had all cleaning dishes.
Yeah, I know, I saw.
Great. Okay. All right, and then the other, um, was. People are starting to bark a little bit about bike riding and motorcycles on streets with, uh, our new gravel roads that we have.
They were up this morning working on them streets, uh. Little gray streets or whatever. You know, I didn't have enough guys today to, uh, crack seal, so I had them all sweeping.
And that's the message I'm passing along to. We got a lot going on in the springtime. Priority right now is tarring, getting the cracks sealed while things are wide open. And yeah, we need to, we're trying to pick up as much of the, the chips as we can. It does seem super excessive around, actually by the school, we have washboards.
Yep.
From, from the rocks.
Yeah, we got that number here.
Yeah. So, um, that's, I'm just telling people we're busy. Things are, we got a lot going on. Um, and then with that wind yesterday, it just created more mess.
Yeah, a little bit of rain would help to settle some of that dust and watch some of the real fine stuff away.
Yeah. And then last thing with streets is, and this is a little bit with, with police too, is that. Fred Mackey said that he's seen some near miss accidents down in this corner. He's saying it's a really dangerous intersection. We need to consider doing something with that. I know it's been this discussion in the past. But, uh, I'm not sure what the answer is. Short of spending a lot, a lot of money to create an intersection down there. And cutting into the park or something else to make the, the road safer for traffic at the intersection. You know, the springtime with, and hydrers tanks coming in and out of there and with all the farm traffic and everything else, it's just.
Have the guy install the yield sign, main off, main on to fourth.
Because that's the true goal.
Fourth is, I know it's, you know, that is technically a key intersection, so fourth would have the right wing. You're turning off a main street off the fourth. So main should either stop or should have the yield sign. You know, local people know that, everybody considers that current, I've been going up the Senex, has main street.
Yeah.
Any of these truckers that come in or whatever, if they see a straight line, they figure they got the right one.
Yeah, so. Yeah, like we could put a yield there around.
Cause you are making a turn off the whole distance street.
Yeah. Cause I guess if there was an accident, it might be really hard to determine whose fault it is with a yield sign issue. So. Talk to Jim about that and I'm not sure how many accidents we've had at that spot. It's probably been eleven. Near misses. Yeah, Burling's house, yeah. So, there's something I had to comment on streets, so. Um, finance, busing.
We did have a busing meeting on the tenth. Talked about, um, a plan for a grant for a new van and some other items. And, um, Peg said that her buses are filling up already for the next school year.
All right.
Yes, reminding parents that they need to sign up now, even though your kids are riding this year because you don't hit a. Reserve spot just because you're on last year. And, um, we are looking for another bus driver because she said we are gonna need another bus driver to fill all the requests that she's getting. That's all, that would be it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Nancy? All right. Dan's not here for police or fire unless someone else has any other comments. I guess forestry, I guess it's been determined Mike Fralich will take the forestry position. So we'll start to having him get moving on that, you know, coordinate, coordinate that between Dave and Dan and myself.
Uh, I guess one thing under there is I've had a lot of calls on whose dogs. Do we need to put a notice out there again that your dogs need to be leashed? And maybe they need to, um, go pawnee in your own yard. There's a lot of complaining about that in some neighborhoods. We had one member of our community go on Facebook and say he has a twenty-two with a silencer. I don't think that's legal. So we don't wanna encourage that, but, um. But, uh, yeah, I've had a lot of people say that there are dogs roaming. I don't know what to do. It's always a.
I, that's.
Ongoing problem.
It, it is, and I guess we're just. Keep enforcing that as hard as I can and do. I know that they're really good about when they do get a dog, they put it on Facebook saying, hey, we've got this dog, it's yours, come down and get it. They did, did have a, someone just got fined here last.
And I was gonna say, I don't know if that should be the proper procedure. I think the proper procedure should be if your dog is roaming, it's in jail and you need to pay to get it out and if it ever hurt a little more. Instead of finding the cop and getting your dog back.
I think it's a multiple, you know, offender, you know, if it's, you know, a part-time deal.
I mean, I don't want them spending all day long picking up dogs and, and doing that, but.
Part of the gig.
Yeah, it's, they're, they are loose and if they're big dogs, you know. And, and there are in some neighborhoods, the large dogs. I don't like to walk in some neighborhoods because the dogs are out and I don't know your dog. So, just something to keep reminding people. That would be it.
Thank you. HCD Buster's not here. He did put his paperwork in for the, for the grant with the, uh, um. AARP forty-one thousand dollar grant, uh, for the corner, the, the triangle piece of concrete done by Jensen Jewries. For a new concrete and structure there and, uh, really a nice approved area, so. He said in June is when we'll find out if we are working that. Under my report. Did we try to get anything done over at Arles Moss's back there? Did we try to cut a trench at all or?
We filled in just a little bit on the roof of his building between here's and Jimmy's. We filled in that little wet spot, but we're just gonna try and get distracted ceiling.
All right, and then, uh, the other thing that's, it's. Got a, got a letter from, it's in your package about the outlets in the, in the hall. Taste the hazen, it sounded like they were popping a lot of breakers again and, and, you know. That is one of the biggest fundraisers they have throughout the year and it's one of those things where. It's just not, uh. We've talked about it several times about getting a new service in there or adding, you know, like a panel beside it or whatever to increase the, uh. Capacity for that thing, so I know that people are really frustrated when they have events like that in there, so.
It happens all the time when you have a fundraiser back. You've got that service counter, you can't plug in two roasters. You know, the break and then you got roasters in the kitchen.
We wanna encourage people to have weddings here and dances.
The whole large house, that whole west hall and all the way around there's a one breaker. You put two roasters on there and it flips right.
Something needs to be done.
There's never been an issue with any of the dances.
No, but Chase, I think probably, or in the aspect of even like the vendor shows maybe.
Yeah.
Do we have the right size breaker?
Well, I think the best thing would be to have Mark come and take a look at it, give us a quote for what needs to be done because you're gonna have to rewire everything. Cause everything's just run off one right now, so.
So, so I, I recommend the same thing. Get a hold of Mark, come and look at it and give us a. Write us up what, what he thinks we need to do that changed or helped out. That's the case, we'll, we'll take any action now, we'll just have Monty get a hold of Mark and come take a look at it. Okay. Uh, that's all I have. That's ten A, uh, North Dakota Assur- Insurance Reserve Fund.
Yeah, the meeting's coming up May twenty-second. If anybody wants to attend, let me know. I'll order SVP for you, otherwise we'll give the proxy the same as we've done all the previous years.
All right, I, I forgot one other thing under my report. I did get a, some information from. Mary Hill Road about, uh, tobacco used products like, uh, jewels and. All these other smokeless devices, um, that there's a conference going on, uh, in Bismarck and else, send that information out. Let you know when that is if anybody wants to go to that. Eleven A, garbage truck bid notice and publication. So. We've got that done. Already looked at Dave and Mike have taken a look at it too, is that correct? Dave, you guys got that covered already? Garbage truck. Bid.
Yeah, Casey, I went through that. I guess after commission approval, separate we rolled out a new partnership.
Okay, so everybody gets a chance, look at that. Are there any other changes you wanna make to that or good? All right, then we just need to approve. Motion by Stern to approve the publication of the garbage truck bids.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion.
Now, I guess one thing, you know. No, I guess one thing, you know, was even if we were to order it now, the way it sounds, it would be here like spring of like next year's.
Wow.
Hopefully by February or somewhere after the first of the year, something like that, that probably all non-trusts.
Holy, I guess I'm in the wrong business. And that's, we use to go through the same vendor all the time? Is that, is that why it's sanitation products?
No, it's not them, it's actually, uh, Kevin Chastain.
Oh, really?
All of my talk tools there, that part all ready.
Hmm, wow, okay. All right, good to know. So, don't drag your feet. Just gonna be a while, yeah. Yeah, let's just keep saying that, right. Those interest rates are so awesome. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
All right.
Ken.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried. New business authorization resolution for the, uh, bus grant. Nancy, you got that or? Monty?
That goes back to our annual operating administration grant, sort of, in terms of, you know. I am finalizing the grant stuff now. This is just one step in it. If you want, if you wait, if you're hard enough to grant down or you can approve this now, then I'll have the grant ready for the next meeting and that's to be submitted by fifteen.
Ken, and you, you'd like a motion, is that what?
Yeah, if you wanna approve it tonight, I'll take the motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
All right.
Ken.
Aye.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried. Nationwide retirement fixed account changes. That's you, Mont, that's all you, Monty.
Yeah, the guaranteed minimum rate on our fixed account is changing, uh, Nationwide has been pretty generous with everybody compared to the, everybody else in the industry, so they're changing their program. We have options. I spoke to our representative. Our best option is to leave it. Uh, those who are currently in the fixed program would be able to stay. They would still get the three and a half percent as a guaranteed minimum interest rate. But any new employees who would sign up or take the fixed account option after the May, that's the end of May. They would be at the guaranteed minimum rate of point five zero percent on the fixed account, which is kind of a graduated rate. Right now it's at one percent. Uh, the difference is if we don't exercise an option, it limits what funds can be transferred by each employee. If we don't go with option three, we would be limited to twenty percent of all retirement funds that could be transferred within a year. So if one person does twenty percent, nobody else can transfer money out of that fixed account. Or if we do this option three, it's, it leaves it where everybody can do up to twenty percent of their funds can be transferred from the fixed account over that year. So that's why Carmen's recommendation was option three. It provides the best flexibility for all the employees. And if we don't pick an option, then we're stuck in the one where everybody's at the twenty percent, the company's at a twenty percent of transfer.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm pretty naive about this stuff, Monty, so talking like I'm a third grader. When we're talking about re- for retirement, is this for people that are retired with them or?
This is for those who are still contributing into our, into the funds.
Okay. So it's nothing to do with people that want to retire or?
No, cause they're in the fixed account. Most of them, if they've retired, they're in a fixed account where it's just going to be interest. That won't affect them at all.
Okay, all right, so you're recommending option three, so are they.
You've got a lot of money in fixed assets.
Just wanna make sure you're protected, Dick, that's all. Okay, any questions?
So, I guess right now as it stands, I suppose we don't really know the transfer, transfer history in the past. Do we, I mean, that's what the.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't.
Yeah.
Okay, Monty's recommendation is option three. Take action on this, tend that to good.
So moved to option three.
Okay, motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Ken.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried. Gonna move back up to the president's report one more time. I'm sorry, I should took better notes. I did get a call from Kerry at M D U the other day, um, and talking about our street lights and about concerns people are having. Uh, he's hearing good and bad, but, um, if you have people that call you and are, are not happy with the direction that their fixture is pointing and they can, they can rotate them and move them a little bit, they not, they're not gonna put a new fixture on, but they may put a shorter arm on or redirect the light a little bit. So if you have people that are calling, tell them to call City Hall and we need to get a list going and they, um, he said they will try to do some of those if possible, so Kerry is very, uh, he's, uh, he called me and gave it over that, so. You know, make sure we're directing those people downtown and getting lists, okay? All right. Um, that brings us to.
The bills, Kerry. On that, uh, selection of three, did you also have to make, uh, some selection or is that?
No.
Presume all.
That's presumed.
Okay.
All right. We got set to approval of the bills. Before we talk about the bills, I'm gonna mention one bill that we have submitted to us. It's at the bottom of your notes, maybe you, did you see that? So Eric Bab is billing the city two hundred and fifty dollars for snow storage in his yard. And, uh, I called him today to ask him what that was all about and he said that he wanted, he, we blocked access for him to get into his yard where he parks a trailer or camper or something that he uses and, uh, I think he's kind of backed off on, 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 on the billing of us of that two fifty, but he'd rather not have the snow pushed in his yard anymore. Um, there is a boulevard there. We do have the right to push it onto the boulevard. I don't know how deep that boulevard is. Uh, we can find out, but, you know, that is a big cul-de-sac, but we can put a big pile of snow right on the north edge of the cul-de-sac too, I guess, but, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we do not pay that bill of two hundred and fifty dollars. Anything else, Monty, you wanna add to that or? Okay.
So the only thing I have is, is, so then, so then all we did was just moved it off the street.
Well, we cleaned, yeah, the.
Under the boulevard.
Pushed up on the boulevard or whatever, so I pulled the backside of the pile, probably still in there properly here without crews.
I, I wish you, I said, I wish you would've called and talked to us about it soon so I could see where the pile really was. And he doesn't want the opportunity of, you know, gouging his, his yard up and things like that. I don't know.
Yeah, we drove up into the, or, or left the street.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, I made several drives this past winter.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think there's another situation that caused him to get irritated and that was kind of backlash, but, so it's, I'm recommending we ignore that bill. Other than that, taking approval for anybody answering, if anybody has any questions for Monty on the bills.
Is that bill off of the approval bill?
It wasn't on there.
It wasn't.
It hadn't been included.
Motion approved.
Yeah, motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
All right, well, over and out.
All right, motion carried. Being adjourned. Thanks for being here, guys.